Welcome, everybody, to the city of St. Boniface. We are here for the construction projects on Steiner. I already forgot. I've been reading way too much stuff today.
Well, for the industrial park.
We're going to do the industrial park first and then we'll do Glacier.
And you're an engineer.
Yes. So we have the engineers here to do a presentation. If we could hold all questions until he's done, and if you are speaking, you have to be up at the podium. Otherwise, everyone else should be quiet so that we can hear everybody who's speaking, please.
All right, I can take it from there. I'm Ryan Johnson, Assistant City Engineer in St. Boniface, project engineer with Bolton and Mink. Jake Salisbury is also here, City Engineer. So you're here tonight to hear about the 2023 Street and Utility Improvements Project. This is the improvement hearing as part of the project process. This was a project that was identified in the Capital Improvements Plan here last year. It's kind of a priority project with streets with poor quality pavement, some utility issues in the industrial park area. It was kind of identified by council and staff as an important thing to improve in town. Tonight's presentation format, kind of run through the timeline of how the project's going to evolve, some of the key issues that come up with it, the project scope of what's what all is included in this project, what we're doing in each location, and the cost information that's associated with that. Also, we'll touch on project financing and funding. There's different sources that can pay for the project and how we pay for that. Then we'll go through the city assessment policy, how assessments were estimated with this project and the project costs, which will include the assessment area map. Then we'll run through project cost summary for each section of town and what's covered under each piece. And then we'll follow through with the next steps in this project process and where we go from tonight. And then following that, you have open questions and comments, any concerns that you have. That's the piece, I guess, that we'd like to split out, have the industrial park area ask questions first, just to kind of keep on the same topic rather than jump back and forth. The presentation will mostly, it'll cover both as we go through each. Our timeline so far, so at this time, we've already completed soil borings, core pavement or pavement cores to see what the depth is of the existing streets, full topographic survey as needed, which gets us all the vertical information and utility things that we need. City staff has gone through a lot of the utilities already, kind of assessing what needs to be repaired if stuff's in good shape or bad shape, and identifying issues that we can repair. We also completed a feasibility study, which that's where this assessment and the scope and everything kind of began, or where we're kind of presenting that here tonight. That's where all the data comes from, all the cost estimates and all that stuff. The feasibility study was approved by council, and then they called for a public hearing, which is what we're doing tonight. So the items that remain, tonight, we're at the public hearing to let everybody have input and discussion on the project. The next step in the process would be the authorization of final design and ordering of improvements. That would be to say, yes, go ahead and make the construction plans and specs. So that's that, that would be the following step, is we receive the order to make those, and then Bolton and Mink would put the plan together, the actual final design of exactly what's going to happen. At this stage, it is pretty high picture. We know mostly what we're going to do, but we don't know exactly on your property sort of detail. So then they would also authorize the advertising for bids. So that's putting the project in the paper and online for construction contractors to bid on it. And then following that, we would open bids and award the contract to the low bid contractor. And then we would obtain project financing throughout that process. The city would work with their financial advisors and make sure that everything's in order. Then this summer, we would actually do the construction on the streets and the utilities. And then in the fall, when construction is close to completed and we have final projected costs, we hold an assessment hearing, which then gives you the final assessment. Everything that you see today is an estimate. The final assessment and the final cost of the project will be presented later this fall. And then finally, we would close out the project and complete construction. Some of the key issues on this project. The pavement is in very poor condition in both the industrial park area and Glacier and Partridge Road. There are a lot of potholes. You guys have all driven over them, lots of patching, lots of maintenance work for city staff. In the industrial park area, it's actually an inadequate section. It was when it was constructed on the on the poor soils out there, it was a little bit thinner than it probably should have been. We're going to come through and reconstruct that completely, putting a bigger, thicker section in there to hold up to the heavier traffic. One of the things that is included in the study is adding a sidewalk on Glacier. It'd be on the south side of the street, kind of extending from the storage facility towards the west. Let this plugged in only. Other improvements we would have would be in the drainage facilities, which is your storm sewer and ponding. This is primarily in the industrial park area. As you're tearing up the whole street, that's the opportunity to repair the storm sewer that goes along with it and make sure that that's all flowing correctly. The pond in the industrial park area could potentially be cleaned out. What happens is it gets full of sediment over the years. That pond was built in the 70s. All the pavement and tires and stuff slowly adds up, and then you lose your capacity in the pond. We're going to survey that this spring and find out if it needs to be cleaned out to get the capacity back. And then we'd also have spot repairs throughout the city, the majority of which are kind of catch basin related sometimes, and they're noted as the red points in the in the project. These are identified with city staff, and rather than doing it as a standalone project, if you put it together with a larger project, we tend to get better costs on those things. Municipal utility facilities. So with the full reconstruction of the industrial park, that water main is pushing 50 years old, which for a ductile iron water main is getting to its life expectancy. So when we don't, last thing we want to do is reconstruct that street and have a water main break to come out and tear it up again. So that was identified as a big improvement that's needed in that area, along with some spot sanitary sewer repairs. It also gives, yeah, that opportunity to repair the inadequate utility infrastructure underneath the streets. So I kind of touched on the Steiner, Steiner Street and Palmer Place and the industrial park. We're improving that to a truck route section. So again, they have the heavier traffic in that area. And when it was kind of built next to the lake there, it's poor soils, and it just kind of pushes it all around, leading to some extra damage. So we're going to put in a thicker section, including sand and drain tile underneath it to help alleviate any of that subsurface water as well. We're adding, replacing curb and gutter in the entire area, and then also adding curb to the north side up by Highway 7. Currently, there isn't any right now, and we would add a little strip on the north side. It includes full storm sewer replacement, as I discussed before. You're tearing up the entire road, and so those existing catch basins and stuff will need to be replaced. The potential pond cleaning that I touched on as well. And the total estimated project cost for this location is for the storm and streets is 1.827 million. The proposed sanitary and water improvements in this area, we would basically just replace the existing older water main that's in place. And also, in 2020, we had identified citywide sanitary sewer, what was good and what was bad, some of the improvements we could make. In this past year, we improved the majority of the town with some lining. You probably saw some of the equipment around town. In the industrial park area, we did not make the improvements at that time because we're going to be digging up the streets. It was more cost effective to do it with this project. We'll be replacing everything with the water main, hydrants, valves, curb stop services, everything, all at once. And then cathodic protection, it's, you use that when we have, it's corrosive hot soils, which St. Boniface has and lots of Carver County does. That, those soils kind of eat away at iron and water main and stuff like that. So what we do is we put in like sacrificial anodes, stuff that will take that corrosion away from your actual facilities. The total estimated cost for this utility work is $644,000. The proposed improvements for the Glacier Road and Partridge area, this would be a street reclamation. So I don't know if anybody's ever seen a reclamer. They're a very big machine that come and basically tear up the entire street and make it into gravel. They stay, so we keep the curbs in place. That isn't not, we'll replace some that's cracked and broken, but it's pretty minimal. But the reclamer tears up the batuminus, the black top on top, and the aggregate mixes it all together and re-compacts it as a good combined base. Sometimes you'll hear like a melon overlay. That just takes off a little top of it, a little top of the street, and you just kind of repave it. This kind of rebuilds the whole street in place. It's kind of a high-quality maintenance job, is how you could describe it. The sidewalk extension, as I said before, is long, proposed along the south side of Glacier Road, extending from the storage facility almost to the city line there. And then we would have spot curb replacement, which generally is between like 10 and 25% of the curb. We'll identify that here in the spring of what what needs to be replaced, but it should be pretty minimal. And then that gives us the opportunity for spot utility repair. City staff has looked at some of the valves. If valves aren't turning, not working properly, again, this is a good opportunity while the street is torn up to replace those and fix those. The total estimated project cost is $2,770,000 for this area. Project funding and financing. The project would be funded through the sale of Chapter 429 General Obligation Bond or Combined Bond. This is part of the state statute 429, the special assessment process. Bond apportionment, portionment, the project cost will be determined later, determined later as the city discusses it with their financial consultants of how exactly that will get funded. But we're proposing it as a project funding sources of special, combination of special assessment, the existing sewer water and stormwater funds, and also from the general funds. The assessment policy. So how, how is this put together? The city's assessment policy provides a uniform and equitable policy for all property owners. So what we did, it's a 25% project cost assessment. So 25% of the entire project goes towards a special assessment. That's part of the city policy. So in the industrial park area, we gave one unit per lot and one unit, so that's for the street portion. And then for the utilities, it was one unit per existing water service. So if you had water, you're getting charged for the water replacement. In the Glacier and Partridge area, all single-family residential homes were charged one unit per parcel. In the commercial area, the assessment was done by taking the average front footage of a residential lot, which I think was 104 feet. So if it was in excess of that average residential lot, we multiplied that by the their actual front footage. So for example, if we had a 100-foot lot and the commercial property was 200 feet, they were assessed two units. I guess that's the easy way to explain that. And then the Glacier and Partridge, the multifamily homes, they were assessed the same way as the commercial, whereas we took the full front footage, because they were odd-shaped lots. So we had the full front footage, and that was also, then that was divided by the number of units per parcel as well. And then pond cleaning and the miscellaneous repairs were not assessed. All the other work was. This shows the industrial park assessment map. There are 15 parcels in this project area, 13 of which are going to be assessed, and one lot is a city-owned lot. That's the pond area. So the city is also being assessed as, you know, they own property in that location. The estimated street and sewer reconstruction assessment per unit is $30,822.69. And the estimated water main assessment is $9,503.35. Yeah, so the Glacier and Partridge Road area, there were 119 properties in this project location. 116 of these properties are proposed to be assessed, two of which are city lots. They're the two parks in the area. There are five commercial lots and 12 multifamily lots. There are three residential lots that council did not feel should be assessed. There are lots six, seven, and eight. They're actually, they're too small. They're very small on the north side of Glacier, that they wouldn't be buildable. So that is why those were excluded, as they could never build a home on that site. The estimated improvement assessment per unit is $4,935.36. The project cost summary, so the total estimated project cost is $5,269,000. Broken out, the industrial park is about $2.5 million, and the Glacier and Partridge Road area is $2,770,000. The miscellaneous repairs around town, those red dots, mostly storm sewer, is approximately $27,000. The total amount that is being assessed, which is basically the 25% of the project cost, is 1.1 million. This does not include the city assessed parcels. We included those with the total city cost. So the city is, the city's paying $4,115,000. This does include $63,000 of the city parcels, so the park and the pond locations. When we're doing the assessment rates, we used an estimation of 5% for bonding. This can fluctuate, you know, as the interest rates go up and down, but we would secure financing here this spring or summer, so whatever the interest rates would be at that time. The next steps in this process, tonight, we're here with the improvement hearing. This is part of a required process of the state statute. The next piece would be order improvements. That is on next week's agenda for February 1st, the city council meeting. And that requires a four-fifths vote per statute. Again, the next step would be final design and ordering of plans. That's where we really get into the nitty-gritty of how exactly do we design this and what happens to your street or your property. There's a potential, sometimes cities choose to hold an open house when we're partway through plans, kind of have a good idea of what we're going to do. Sometimes a good time to just have more public opinion and see what, what ideas and comments you guys have. That's an optional thing that that council can ask us to do. Then in the spring, we would end up advertising bids again in the paper and online. Then we would open them and award the project based on the low bid. That would all probably happen approximately April or May of this year, so that way we're ready for construction once everything thaws out. So during that same process, probably right after award, would be obtaining project financing as the city talks to their financial advisors again. And then we would construct the project this summer. It would probably last, I would guess, most of the summer. It's a pretty big project. But again, in final design, we'll have a better, we'll have a better idea of that and let everyone know as we, as we get there with project emails, website postings, and other things like that. It'd be continually updated. And then in the fall, we would do that, conduct the assessment hearing, which when we have our final costs, again, these are all estimates, but hopefully they're pretty close. So that the assessment hearing is when it would be your final assessment amount. And then the, the city has to certify the assessment role at the end of that with the county, so that way the assessment would go on the tax roll, if not paid prior. And then we would complete construction and close out the project. All right, with that, we'll open up questions and comments with the, anybody involved with the industrial park area, please, start with them.
So how will that be handled? Will there be like?
If you, if you don't mind, could you? Excuse me. If you're talking, could you please go up to the microphone? Just state your name and address for the record, and then you can ask a question.
Michael Ivers, M&amp;I Properties, 4385 Steiner Street. I own the business at the very end of the street, so I'm wondering how that would be handled as far as, you know, our business traffic during the project. We've got customers, we've got our own units in and out. Obviously, we can't be shut down for, you know, a long period of time, if any.
Yeah, on that dead-end street like that, it does make it more difficult. But we always have, there will be times, and we'll work with you of when there's an actual closure. Say we're working on the sanitary sewer right in front of you, it's going to be difficult to get in there, but, you know, we'll, we'll work it through with you and find, say, a low time or a best day for you. But in general, most days, you'll be able to get in and out.
All right, because another big concern of mine is we haul oversized loads, so we have loads up to, you know, 14 feet wide coming through. And obviously, with construction, I can foresee some problems there. So, you know, obviously, want to keep that in mind as this project is moving along. Because that just puts us at a standstill if we can't get in and out of our business. See if I had any other questions. So it's, go ahead.
Just gonna say, as you mentioned during the sanitary sewer, that'll be the challenging. With the roadway, we do require the contractor to maintain access to property. So typically, they look at doing half at a time or something similar to that. So again, we'd have more detail later on, but your, yes, your, your concern is valid, and we are, we are aware of it.
Sure.
And like, if you, if you do know there's a delivery coming, you know, you'll have our contact info, please let us know.
Sure, and we can't always foresee that. I mean, we get a call that a guy's boat's down and, you know, we need to get it out of the water and back to the shop. You know, it's not going to be, you know, necessarily something that can wait. So as far as the water in the sewer, are they just going to the curb? We have a hydrant all the way back to our property. I mean, will they be replacing that hydrant? Will they be replacing lines back there? How is that going to work?
That's not the intent for that, for that area. We would basically stop at what would be the right of way in that cul-de-sac.
Like at the cul-de-sac?
Yep.
But the hydrants themselves would be replaced?
Yes.
Even further down?
Well, I know that one loops back to 92.
Yeah, so that goes through my property. It goes to a hydrant, and then it goes, continues on, it goes over to 92.
So the limits would stop at that right of way on the cul-de-sac.
At the cul-de-sac.
So if there is a hydrant further on, that would not, that is not part of the project.
All right. Now, as far as these assessments, can these be paid rather than financed?
Yes, yep. So as part of that assessment hearing that's coming up, you, you will be notified of the options with that. You can pay in full.
Okay.
And then you have, you have 30 days after that assessment hearing to do that with no interest, you know, no, no added costs added to that.
And that's done after the completion of the project?
That would be, yep, so that would be after the assessment hearing, to be determined, you know, probably in that October timeframe. The city council has to certify the assessment role by November 30th in order to get it on the 2024 taxes. So ideally, that hearing would be before October 30th, just so the timelines work out. But yes, paid in full. If you don't want to do that, you don't have to do anything, and then it would go on your taxes.
Sure, roughly 6%.
Yep, to be determined, but that's what's estimated. And then with that same notice at that time, there's also instructions on, if in the event you want to appeal your assessment, there's instructions about what, what to do if, if you don't feel that you're getting the benefit or you wanted to look, look at that. That's, that's also included in that same, in that same paperwork.
All right. I think that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions that they would like to ask about the, oop, one more?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm Carmine McCurry, representing the Learning Center that's over there, the Childcare Center. So with all the water stuff happening, is there going to be water turned off?
There will be at times, but what, what they do is they set up a temporary water system. So it would only be down for a few hours.
Oh, okay.
Once in a while, and we always notify ahead of time so that you can prepare for it. But a lot of times, when they replace the full water main, there's a temporary water, it's basically like, it's a very small one that they set up in the yards, just so that water pressure exists and you, you are able to use it most of the time.
All right, and so how are we going to get your contact information or you get our contact information?
I have cards, I have a pile of cards over there. And as we move through the project, we'll, we'll send out flyers, we'll send official memos, we'll send updates, we'll probably have something on websites or emails.
Yeah, at a minimum, you'll be getting a letter, the same mailing list that we have here that says, you know, here, we have a rough schedule, here's what we have, here's the contact information, whether it's Ryan and maybe an onsite person. We'll have additional information in case there's whatever special needs or access issues or a delivery like the gentleman mentioned, so you know who to get in touch with for such items.
Okay, and can we give you more than one address or email or whatever?
Yeah, the more information we get from you guys, the better.
Okay.
That's always good for us, too.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other industrial park questions, comments?
Eric Anderson, St. Boniface Fire Chief. Just wondering, in the industrial park area, will we be down fire hydrants during that period?
There, there will be a time, yes. We, we notify the emergency services, such as yourself, so everyone's aware of what's going on. Depending on where the exact construction is, we could possibly turn something on in an emergency. We can't use it for potable use, because it wouldn't be tested yet, but we'll make sure you have contact information as well, and you're aware of it, so you know you might need some assistance in the unfortunate event of a fire while there's, this water system is in limbo. But very, very good question, very important question.
Okay.
Thank you, chief. Anyone else for the industrial park? All right. Should we split it up between the Glacier and, or just all at the same time?
All at the same time.
Okay. So we'll open up the floor to anyone who would like to ask questions about Partridge or Glacier, either one. Well, yeah. All the other ones. Spruce. Does anybody have any questions? If you could go up to the podium, please. I guess it's not a podium, is it? I'm used to saying that in the other room.
Reed Winter, 8954 Pheasant Lane. So on this list that you sent out, there's only 26 homes out of 96. Why is there only 26 assessed versus all 96 in the townhomes? So on this list, there's only, there's 10 on Quail Court and 16 on Partridge. So what happened to the other homes?
I think they're, aren't they as listed as A, B, C, D for each number? Is that how, is that what you're getting at?
So there's.
So this would be like one building, and each of those?
So the assessment hearing data was taken from the county records.
So like Reed Winter is right there. I live in Coolah, and it's assessed, but there's only 16, and there's a total of 96 homes. So right here, there's only 16.
Yep.
And there's only 10.
So where are the other? They keep going. Well, there's another page.
Okay, so I just didn't get the other page.
That possibly, yeah, I guess.
If that's what you received in the mail, or, yeah, I suppose, did, did we just mail out the specific property, not the full assessment?
Not the full, there's five pages.
It was split up in our neighborhood, too.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that it was.
Yeah, we, we got them all.
Yep, so all, so all the townhomes are included. Ryan mentioned earlier that assessment per unit, so the math on that townhomes worked out to be point one. Ryan mentioned earlier that assessment per unit, so the math on that townhomes worked out to be point-one-eight units. So that, whatever that number was, it was close to five thousand dollars. The proposed assessments listed there, you know, eighteen percent of that. So that's that eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight number for the multifamily properties.
So if you take that five thousand and divide it by eight, it comes to six-sixteen, so how did you get to the eight-eighty-eight?
The eighty-eight, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, that, that's what the bonding interest usually, that's what probably brought that up, the six percent over the fifteen years. So it's, it's that final price, and then that's back, back.
So if you take the low bid, I guess this is just an in-general question, who's to say that they don't take the low bid? I mean, I've done bids my whole career. Can they come back and then say, oh, by the way, we need an extra million and a half? You know what I mean? Because like, when you get to the end of the project, they say, oh, my gosh, we didn't see this here.
So we, we will have, yeah, we will, we will fight against that as best as we can. There are contractors that try to get every nickel they can, but we have contract language to prevent such things. We have assurances in place, and we'll, we'll also have an onsite representative to inspect everything. If they say, no, I put in ten thousand feet of water, maybe not eight thousand, we'll say, no, you did X feet on this day, X feet on this day. So we'll have some checks in place, we'll also have some quality control and some testing to make sure we get the products that are specified. So there's several, several different steps to that, but the intent is to minimize that to the extent possible. And if there is an extra, we would know about it ahead of time. They have to, if they're requesting any sort of change, they have to get approval ahead of time before they even do it. So we can look at that price and bring it to the council if it's, if it's, needs, needs to be discussed.
All right. My main question was just, why is there only sixteen homes?
Understood.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Knutson, eighty-nine sixteen Pheasant Lane. One of the questions that we had is, we just had in our HOA, in our townhome area, we just had all of our roads redone with this exact same thing that you were talking about, how you're redoing them. And we, living on Pheasant Lane, technically don't live on Partridge. We use that as an access road, but we don't live on that road, and we already paid, as our, through our homeowners association, to have our road fixed. So how did, how did you decide to assess our association, each of us specifically, versus assessing our homeowners association as a whole for this project? Especially since it's only used as a entrance road into our neighborhood? And then you have the others, technically, a lot of the community that comes in. I know it's Minatrista, not St. Bonnie, on that side, but a lot of them use our road, come through our road, along with also the traffic that comes in to use the Dakota Line Trail.
So by, by law, the city can assess in the Minatrista, so that, that, that's not an option. As far as, as far as your townhomes, Ryan, I believe the front footage was listed to the property owners, not to the townhouse association. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
So the, legally, yours, townhomes are set up differently. Typically, we assess what shows up on the county records as being, owning the property that's adjacent to the street. Sometimes it is the association, and then your units are set back. This one was, this one was the other way. So we, so it's set up to assess the individual property owners. You mentioned property being, whatever, off of Partridge Road. Yep, we, we, we understand that. Precedent has been set before for properties such as yours, that obviously, you have to access. You're on a private road, but you have to access Partridge Road, no, no matter what, so you are getting that, that benefit. So that's why that decision was made that way. Not, not the way you want to hear it, but...
Yep.
And then as far as the association assessing you, that's, I mean, that's a completely separate item. By law, they don't even have to tell us anything about it. I, I didn't know that had occurred, but that's, with the way that is configured, they have the right to do that separately for the private roads, and then the city has the right to do it for the public roads.
Okay, um, our road don't maintain by the city? So...
Yeah, Partridge Road is, the other ones are not.
But none of the other things are. So that's another question that we all had, was, you know, we don't have a lot of that maintenance. I mean, we pay the taxes for the city, but the city doesn't do, besides the main road, doesn't do anything for our maintenance, for our roads. And through our association, we just had all of our roads redone.
Um, correct, so the benefit you receive is what's on Partridge Road itself, and we acknowledge that is less than what others receive. Hence, that point-one-eight unit, the way that math worked out. So your, so your assessment is, you know, eighteen percent of the single-family property homes for that.
Versus the twenty-five.
Partially for that, partially for that reason.
Okay, and that eighteen percent, is that per lot, so it's, it's for a whole section? And then it's divided between all the, the, whatever, ten units on, per each section? Is that correct, or is it the one-point-eight per each unit? What's in that ten?
All, go ahead.
Yeah, we took, so similar to like the, the commercial area, so the entire front footage along Partridge. Um, it, you know, it's technically split up into odd-shaped parcels.
Yeah.
We took everything that was, that whole foot, just call it five hundred feet.
Okay.
I don't know it off the top of my head. But, so that, if it's a hundred dollars per foot at five hundred feet, total is five thousand, then we just divide it evenly.
Between all of us?
For all the owners, correct.
Okay, okay, and then, um... I think that's all we had. You said that you can't, have you tried working, or can you do anything? I know you said that you can't do anything, because Minatrista is its own city. But with it being an access road for a lot of Minatrista residents as well, did you work with that city to try to come up with some kind of subsidizing or anything like that to help with the, with the...
We, we, we tell them what we're doing in case they have a similar improvement. If there's any reason to try to coordinate things, that was not the case here, but nothing to do with subsidies or anything like that. Generally, just here's what's planned. Do you have anything planned? Is there any benefit, or? And that was not the case here.
Okay, and how much of the, the Partridge Road part is city that you guys are subsidizing with us? Since we have the park and everything there, and the Dakota Line, the trail access and everything, within our Partridge Road area?
So that is also, they're also being assessed in the same way you are. The city is assessing themselves for the park property, so it's completely fair for every, every piece of property.
Okay.
So that is nothing, that, that, the cost to do that is not included in the assessments to the, to the townhome area.
To the townhomes, okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Nathan Thiesfeld, forty-three sixty Forest Road. Couple of questions. One, how do you see the traffic flow during, we're down on Forest and Aspen? So during this time, I'm guessing there's gonna be quite a bit of congestion, kinda like you talked about Steiner. How do you see that working out? For, you've got morning traffic, you've got buses, you've got afternoon traffic?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be part of the process. Construction sadly can be painful and kind of obnoxious for travel once in a while, but it's, it's part of the process. And like I said, we, we work with everybody the best we can to get notifications out. We'll have somebody onsite every day, so that if somebody is stuck or something, they can quick, we can quick move stuff around as best as possible to accommodate everyone.
The, the good news here is that with the reclaim, there isn't significant excavation work. There's not gonna be the deep utility work like in the industrial park. So that'll, that will minimize the likelihood of there being an, an issue.
Okay.
Yeah, with, with the reclaim, so say they come on Monday and reclaim it, you can drive on it right away.
Right. And so there's no area for improvement on the water basins as far as catch basins down Forest and Aspen, which has been horrible over the last probably twenty years?
Potentially, so that's one thing we're gonna identify with city staff of what is, what is bad. So there will be some, as we...
Right. Yeah, I mean, when it, when it rains, it's, it's a river coming down Forest, heading into Aspen, and the homes down in Aspen on the other side. You know, it's, it's four, five, six inches of water constantly down in that area.
We, we have a couple lump sum estimations included in there to cover some of those items, but we haven't, we haven't pinpointed all of those just, just yet.
But if, if you do have items like that, please take my card and email me, so we can...
And then lastly, the, kinda similar with the drainage by ninety-two and Glacier, in front of Kathy McIntune, in front of Quick Trip. And where Glacier hits ninety-two is horrible. It's either icy, or it's full of water. You know, so kind of a similar question there as well.
Yeah, so we just discussed this last week, actually. I talked to Pete, and, and, yeah, it's definitely a bad spot. We need to determine whether that's county right-of-way, you know, it's that...
Right.
It's right in the middle there. I think we'll, what we will look at is, can we improve it, improve it with our project? As I said, there'll be some spot curb replacements, so that's probably a good candidate, once we actually look at it very closely, and...
Okay.
But yeah, that's a known issue that we know about.
Okay, thank you.
Todd Stasco, ninety-nineteen Glacier Road. Two things, before we get to the sidewalk. Can you, high level, talk us through the difference between a complete reclamation of the road versus, you had a word, skimming the top two inches and, and recoding? In terms of cost, duration of the project, and then life expectancy? And then impact on the neighborhood while it's happening? I'm envisioning this big vibrating machine knocking stuff off the shelves for three days. So maybe I'm right or wrong, but can you tell us the difference, high level, on those two aspects of how you'd repair the road?
Yep, so I guess a, a quick overview of how the street lifespan works. You know, it, it varies by street. Let's call it fifty years for the day you construct it, till the day you need to completely start over. A mill and overlay is kind of a, it's a maintenance practice that a lot of towns do, where they, they skim off the top two inches or so. It's kinda just a resurfacing. That should be done every approximately five years or so. So if these roads are pushing twenty years, and we haven't done that at all, it becomes very poor condition. So if you do a mill and overlay, it's, you know, a constant upkeep kind of deal.
A mill and overlay will not touch the base of the road at all, it'll just help with the surface. So that, you know, the lifespan of a mill and overlay depends on moisture and traffic and several different factors, but a real general window is that ten-to-twenty-year time, timeframe for...
That's a big delta, but given the traffic flow in those areas that we're talking about, are we closer to twenty or ten?
If, well...
Yeah, I know it's a guess, but...
Yeah, we're not doing the mill and overlay project here, but I would say we're probably closer to ten on, on Glacier. That's getting a little, hit a little harder. Probably closer to twenty on some of the less traveled streets with a little bit better drainage. So I think it kinda hits both of those targets.
Versus...
So then, what we're proposing is kind of that heavier-duty maintenance. It's called a full-depth reclamation, where they come through and they take that full rock and bit section, grind it all up and recompact it, so it's a good solid base. One thing with mill and overlays is, it's just that surface deal. So that crack will come back and water can get in. With this recompaction and grinding everything together, it gives you a good solid base, and should hold up much better for a longer period of time.
Yeah, so your, your lifespan now, you're looking into that, definitely north of a mill and overlay, you're in that twenty-to-forty-year timeframe. Again, on, on the various factors of the different roadways. And then with adding some tile and fixing some drainage issues, that'll further help that.
Do both projects take about the same amount of time? Ninety days, a hundred-and-twenty days, or is one three months and one's a year?
The reclaim project takes, takes longer than a mill and overlay project. Is that, is that the question?
For construction.
Yeah, significantly more?
Yeah, they, they both have the same with the curb spot replacements. You know, you take out the bad curb, you replace it, that's pretty much the same either way. With the, with the reclaim, you gotta reshape the, the base, you gotta do more grading work, then you have to pave two different lifts as opposed to one lift. So it takes, you know, twice as long to do a reclaim as opposed to a mill and overlay.
Okay, cost savings to do a mill and overlay versus a reclaim?
The reclaim project is gonna cost more, but you get that added quality and that added lifespan. Like we said, we're in that ten-to-twenty, we're now talking twenty-to-forty. So you're three-to-four times the length, you know, for very, very round numbers, you know, three times the cost.
Okay. So over a forty-year period, it would be even, but you're doing three times instead of once or twice, okay.
I guess one thing, one thing to mention on that, comparing the two, the quality of the road currently, a mill and overlay would not fix anything, really.
Okay.
It needs to be a constant maintenance practice.
Okay. Impact on the neighborhood while these two things, then? My, my description of this big machine that's shaking houses...
You're, you're, you're partially correct. There will be noise, there will be dust, there will be a mess. You will, you will curse Ryan's name when you drive home from work at night.
I will get dusted.
Once or twice. The bulk of the vibration and the, your house shaking is more to do with trench compaction with the clay soils, whereas we're staying up higher. So there will be, there will be some noise and some vibration, but not, not as, not to the extent you'd see in a full recon area with more extensive work, so.
Is there a history of data to how it affects foundations and structures themselves? Through this project?
We, we do vibration monitoring when we're getting close to very, very old buildings. We haven't had any issues in a neighborhood such as this.
Okay.
So there is something we consider, you know, if we were doing this, perhaps along ninety-two there, where we have zero-foot setbacks on some buildings that are a hundred-plus years old, then it, then it would be a concern, and we would look at some of that data. But here, here, it's not, not necessary.
We'll let Joe kinda add on to this piece, and then we'll come back and talk...
No, stay up here, it's only gonna take a second. Joe Anderson, eighty-nine forty-nine Glacier Road. You guys are talking about the mill, you know, the milling, and you're, you're kinda giving it a bad name, from my experience. I have a lot of experience in it. Is it, when you did your testing, is the base material on Glacier, is there a problem there? Did you, did you find that, because typically, the reason you wouldn't mill is because the base is structurally sound. And you wouldn't wanna disrupt it. Because when you go and you do a complete reclaim, and you've got good base, and you pour, you pull everything out, you take a chance, when we talked about, somebody asked about the price going up. It's gonna happen. I can tell you right now, it's gonna happen. The first day it rains, the first day you drive over clay. But as you walk down Glacier and you look at it seriously, you don't see dips, you do not, you see little cracks, which are standard in blacktop. And when you talk about, what did you say, ten years to fifteen maybe on a mill and overlay? And it's still gonna go through the cracks, that's incorrect. That doesn't happen that way. So you're, you're telling these people, you're guaranteeing them that if they do a full, complete tear-out, that they're not gonna have any problems for forty years? I've never heard blacktop lasting for forty years. So I'm not sure what we're talking about here. I just wanted to throw that two cents in there, because I think I'd like to know what the base material, what you found on the base. You know, what, because I'm not seeing it.
So the depths of the pavement cores, it was, on average, about six, six-and-a-half inches of bituminous, so the blacktop, on top of six inches of rock aggregate. That's what the existing sections are in this part of town.
As far as the reflective cracking, the city did a mill and overlay project in the entire northeast quadrant. Twenty-thirteen, twenty-fifteen, few, and they're not far too distant past. They, they did, they did the mill and overlay project that we were kinda talking about, not what's recommended here. And those cracks all reflected through within two years, basically two freestyle cycles. And there was some, some unhappy folks thinking, hey, we're supposed to have a brand-new roadway. Well, you don't have a brand-new roadway, you have a mill and overlay, you have a new top portion of your roadway. Nothing was done with the base or the rest of it, so it starts to look that way. So that's, that was part of the thought with some of the staff and council about what happened up there, and would like to do a little bit more down here.
Okay, thank you. We'll switch gears. Can we talk about the sidewalk just for a second? High level, what problem are we trying to solve? Why are we adding a sidewalk? Why are we considering adding a sidewalk? I live there, I got three kids that are there, and all over everybody's neighborhood, they, they got balls and arrows and gloves in their yards for my kids.
The sidewalk was obviously constructed along the storage facility there to the east of you. That, that was discussed with that plan review, and that was decided to do that with the, obviously, a different land use there, right? You're getting towards the, whatever, gas station and the storage locker. So it was looked at as far as extending that west, with Glacier being more of the collector road, where most people that walk or drive, you know, they tend to funnel to Glacier. So, good comment, something that the council would hear. What I'm hearing is that you are, you are opposed to having that sidewalk? So, so...
Without, without getting too far in the weeds, I wanna go to the reasonings. Because what, what we worry about is, is that gonna, you know, decrease property values and that kinda stuff? If I'm losing eight thousand square feet of my lot, or I got a truck that barely fits in the driveway now, and now it won't, stuff like that. What is that gonna do to the traffic down our road? What's the study that says we need a sidewalk and it's gonna make it safer? How is that gonna affect the traffic going through from Glacier in Hunter's Crest, coming through this way? And is that gonna propel the, the Minatrista City Council? And is that going to propel the, uh, the Minatrista City Council to pull those three big steel poles that opens up Glacier? And increases all the traffic? I mean, those kind of things are what we're wondering about.
So the-
And I don't know anybody that said, damn it, I need a sidewalk because my kids aren't safe there.
So with this project, the, the step we're going to ask the city council to consider is to order the improvements. Uh, that does not include a yes or no, we're either going to do the project or we're not. That, that includes, here's the scope that we want to, uh, include. So, the fact that you're opposed to it, I think it's important that the council hears that and it sounds like some of your neighbors may, may agree with that.
Well, but we want to know, we want to know why. Okay, so if you, if you tell me there's a study that says if you add sidewalks, the streets are going to decrease the amount of accidents caused by eighty-five percent, great. If, you know, those kind of things, what's it going to do to my property value? Things like that, that's what I want to kind of-
Yeah, so in, in very general terms, you know, this, there was not a study done on this little piece of the world. You know, just in, just in general, you're getting ped traffic off of the street, onto the sidewalk. Uh, so, safety more to do with peds than, than vehicle safety items. As far as property values, there's varying, uh, opinions on whether that's a pro or a con.
I have my opinion.
So in my experience doing this engineering work, this may sound odd, but I say this, it's ninety percent true. Whenever there's not a sidewalk and you say you want to add one, it's opposed to. Whenever you have a sidewalk and you say you're going to take it out, that's also opposed. So I don't know why that is, I haven't figured it out. It's, sidewalks have been, have been a tricky, a tricky thing. So I, I kind of tiptoed around your question a little bit, but-
No, I think you did well, I appreciate it. I, I think I just wanted to raise the concern that if it's going to go in, what impact? And what, what problem are we trying to solve? Why are we considering having it there? And how would it change? The, the barrier at the end of Glacier Road brings in a whole bunch of different issues if that all of a sudden comes down.
So that barrier would have to stay in place, right? That would have to stay in place with, unless this council also approves it. But to your, is that, is that a true statement? Correct, okay.
And I don't know that, I don't know if it's combined councils have to vote, I don't know if you guys each get one poll. I don't know how it works because it's on the border.
But to your point, if there were a sidewalk there, you know, the, the Minatrista vehicle traffic would not change, unless that barricade was changed, but I would expect you, I would expect you'd see some ped traffic from Minatrista that would come through. That would be my assumption.
We'll let him in.
Yeah.
Both cities would have to agree to that, I don't think it's going to happen. I hope it doesn't happen, put it that way, ever. Anyway, thank you.
I have a question. I don't live in that area, so I don't frequent it on foot very often.
You should come and visit, it's wonderful.
Well, I've been down there a lot, though, you've got everything down there.
Yes, Karen.
Is there a lot of foot traffic? Do you have a lot of people walking?
See, now, there's where I was looking for data. Because we've got people in the neighborhood that walk their dogs and ride the kids and, and that kind of stuff, obviously seasonally. But I wouldn't say there's a lot of foot traffic there.
Okay.
I don't think there's a lot. I mean, I'll sit out tomorrow and watch how many people walk by my office, but-
And it's safe, there's two always stops right there, right? It's not like a forty-five mile an hour zone.
I'll start driving down there and seeing, well, it's winter now.
If you open it up a little bit, I mean, if the slow zone, I'll find, it's not, people aren't going past.
You can imagine a few of us have got together in the garage and talked about this already. We don't know of a single accident that had harmed a child or a person. We don't know of an animal that's been run over. We don't know of a time when we were scared and, God, we need a sidewalk to get our kids off the street. So we're trying to look for, if there's data that I don't know about, please convince me. If there's not, this might not be a great idea to add on to the project.
There hasn't been any pedestrian counts or anything like that done in this area. It's just a, just a gen- general feeling that it's a larger, larger volume roadway when it comes to ped and bike traffic.
And if the houses were already set back further from the road, it wouldn't make that big of an impact on my front yard? If we, I mean, there's a lot of things that could have been different, but as they are, I think you're going to find most of the people out here are not in favor of a sidewalk.
Yeah, if a sidewalk were to go in, there would be some landscaping impacts to some folks. There would be some small utility impacts, uh, maybe perhaps lighting or hydrants. We haven't looked at that level of detail. We have some assumptions for cost, but you are correct. There would be, there would be impacts to, to the folks on that side of the road.
All right, thanks Jay. Thanks, guys.
Some of the reason why the sidewalk was discussed is because this is such a big project. This is the logical thing to add to this project, is to talk about sidewalks now. So we're not saying we all think we all need a sidewalk. This is just the appropriate time to talk about it. And if we're doing a project this big, this is when we should do it. So you all understand that we're all not like all gung ho about sidewalks, but this is the appropriate time to talk about it. We can decide whether or not we're going to do it. That's why we want your input, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you, that's exactly what we're looking for in this kind of situation.
Hi there, I'm Wyatt with Mackintosh, Kathy Mackintosh. I'm just kind of curious why we're being assessed? Because we don't use that road at all. And you're not doing water improvements along Partridge Road either? Which would impact us and that would be fine, but you're assessing us for the side of our lot, which we don't really use.
So your lot is one that we spoke about. Um, you're the only person being assessed who doesn't have access on the roadway. So you bring up a valid point. Uh, the city policy just goes by frontage size, so it's, it's laid out-
Frontage size as far as the side of our lot?
If you front a public road, you will, you will be, you will be assessed for that roadway. That's the way the assist, the policy is laid out. So that's why you are included. Yours is a property that I, I, uh, would ask the council to take a look at to see what they think is, is appropriate. But to answer your question, per policy, similar to the sidewalk discussion, it doesn't mean that it would stay that way. Uh, the council has until this future assessment hearing, if we get to that point-
Sure.
-to make that determination.
Yeah, and I know, we'll pay our share, but it doesn't really seem like it's part of our-
Yeah, so for the council's benefit, if you're familiar with their property, they, they front on ninety-two and they have a lengthy frontage along Glacier, but no, no access.
If they were, if you guys were doing, say, water improvements along that side of the street, we use a lot of water, but-
But you're, we're not assessing for any water, we're correct. You are correct, yep.
Um, I, ours shares is three times the cost of everybody else's and we're not even using that road. So, doesn't really make a lot of sense to us at least.
Yeah, back to that-
Yeah, and I, and if I'm not mistaken, that actually, that side of that lot is city property anyways, that strip along there.
I don't believe it shows up that way on the county's information, but yeah-
Because we have been told before by the city to mow that, that you'd mow it.
So, well, well, that's, that's probably true. Everybody mows their property that's in the roadway right of way, so maybe that's what you refer, that's probably what you're referring to. But it, it is, the frontage, you, you front the, the public right of way, but you're asked to maintain it to the curb, so-
Yep, fair enough.
Yeah, the previous point Ryan made about the, the commercial industrial type properties in this area, you're assessed based on your average frontage, so you said yours is about three times. I think, I think you were like a two point nine or two point eight, so-
Yeah, it was a lot.
So his assessment is three times that of the, the homes in that, in that neighborhood.
Yeah, and we don't use the road, so it doesn't really make a lot of sense to us. And, um, super quick, it really shouldn't affect anything, but, um, as far as kids walking along that sidewalk, throughout the forty, fifty years we've been around, we actually do hire a lot of kids from those neighborhoods behind there. And it is kind of nice, I have kids coming all the time that slip and fall coming to work and, I don't know, might be kind of nice to have a sidewalk there for our, our employees. But, for a reasonable cost. So, just my input on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Jansen, eighty-nine sixty Glacier Road. So, I am here with the rest of the folks and I have, my input is no sidewalk. Don't take down the barriers, I've been here twenty-two years. It's not necessary. And if you're going to improve the road, one way to keep it lasting longer, especially if I'm going to be assessed, don't put any more traffic on it, it's not necessary. Does that make sense? Is that the input you're looking for? And, and, and so the other, the other, the other piece, so logically, to talk about it. Okay, so we're talking about it, but what decision are you going to make? And when are you going to make?
What decision are we going to make about what part?
The sidewalk.
The sidewalk?
So we, we would ask the council to have input on that when they order the improvements. So that would be at the upcoming council meeting.
On what date?
February first, it's on-
Wednesday.
Wednes- Wednesday, one, one week from today.
Do you need any other help from us to help with that decision?
I, I think you're-
Subtle.
Not to speak for the council, but, but your input here is what we're looking for. So if there's more, if there's more, if there's more that agree with this gentleman, feel free to, and then if the sidewalk- Sure.
And realistically, not everyone is here, right?
Yep.
Hundred and sixteen, nineteen people?
With, yup, some of them are six per property.
Nineteen signatures other than the Mackintosh, and our kids work there, so- Understand that. So thank you for employing them and we'll continue to come and get meet. If we had signatures from people, would that help?
I think it's clear that you don't want it. I think we're all clear that you don't want it.
Great, because I know we're on TV, so this is perfect. Or you're recording it. Um, with respect to curb repair. So, one of the letters said, if I get it right, this is your assessment? Page eight. Proposed utility improvements will be spot repairs identified by city staff. Total estimated cost of watering, is it a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars? And there's some amount that's, help me understand that hundred, is that a hundred and thirty-four? That would be given to, I mean, estimate, would be like given to the city? They have that money and then they decide to come out and look at the road and then fix something?
I guess I'm not, I'm not sure where you're getting the number from, but so, we put an estimated cost in. We have not identified every piece of curb yet.
Okay.
So we put in a good, like I say, in a lot of these jobs, ten to twenty-five percent of the curb is replaced generally. So that's kind of the numbers that we used for these estimates. That's not the cost of the curb and we go find everything we can.
Yeah, it would all be included in the project, I'll be under one general contractor, but we would identify those, better identify those as to what we have right now, if you're talking about the curb, well, the curb and utility repairs.
So, when does that happen? So in other words, I have standing water in front of my house-
So the things were-
-cracked concrete, so, do I need to be there? Because I've called the city before, had people come out and there was water bubbling through the pavement out in front of the house and nothing was ever done. So I'm trying to understand-
If you have an, if you have an obvious one, it's probably known by city staff and probably will be determined during a field visit, so it's probably not a big concern, but you, you could certainly email us that information. Otherwise, at some point down the road, there will be curb markings out there. You'll see a X and an X, we're taking off these three panels. And you might say, you need to go one more and you can let us know and that those minor adjustments we can make when the contractor's standing there at the saw. We don't have to get super, super technical on something like that, okay?
So, let's say you replace a section, whatever that, do I get assessed that cost or do my neighbors get to help pay for the fix?
It's part of the whole project cost.
It's not a part of, yeah.
The only thing I care about is whether I can get my boat out of my garage and through the mess you're going to make. In your last meeting, um, you talked about the fact that there would be signs? You were going to replace city signs?
That's in the industrial park, is that also, is this in the industrial park?
That was in Glacier too, replacement of, of the street signs, yes.
Okay. Can I propose some things to consider?
Please do.
Twenty-five miles an hour?
So the-
Now, there's some folks that I know who've moved out, they don't go through the, they don't blow through the stop sign, I don't think anyone does. Okay.
So the state statute recently changed, that used to be that, the answer to that question used to be an obvi- an easy no, because it was, uh, state, state authority, that local roads were thirties. The city now has some discretion if they go, jump through some hoops and do a study and whatnot, so it's not off the table. I'd have to look into that a little bit more, but the, that ultimate decision, it's easier if there's a school zone and some of those things. It's very simple to change the, change the speed limit. In this case, it would be a little more difficult, there'd have to be some time and expense to ferret that out a little bit more. But it's, the, the answer's not a hard, the answer's not a hard no. If, like, if you'd have asked two years ago, I would have just said, no, sorry. It's not, that's not the answer any longer.
It's not as simple as just put one in the ground?
It's, it's not, it's not, it's not that simple, correct.
That would be great if it was that easy.
Would it be more simple just to put a sign at, once you fix the drainage at Glacier and ninety-two? Also to put a sign that says Glacier Road doesn't go through?
We could, uh, adding a no outlet sign would be a simple thing to perhaps help with some concerns, yeah, that's, I like, I like that, I like that idea.
Yeah. I think that would be fantastic. So, regardless of the bid, they're going to have to finish it in a certain timeframe? In other words, they have to start on a certain date so that you ensure that as you lay down the pavement, we have good pavement?
Yeah, as part of every project, as part of the plan specifications, we say, must be completed by October thirty-first or November twenty. There's always a timeline that they need to be done by.
And with that, there's also temperature requirements. You can't pour concrete below X temperature or batuminous wear course. There's other things aside from just that date, but, but yes is the answer to your question.
Hey Joe, does that make sense? I mean, seriously? Okay. To start, and then as far as temperature, to make sure it says.
Yeah, and I guess a lot of times in the beginning of the year, it's the spring loading restrictions. So when the MNDOT has all the loading restrictions out, contractors can't haul equipment anyways, so it's typically after that, when the thaw is out.
But this project would be beyond that anyway, so it'd be more of a concern possibly on the backend, once we figure out a schedule, but-
And then, just help me understand twenty-five percent. You said it was a city ordinance?
So the city assesses twenty-five percent of costs and that, there's obviously math involved with that, but that's a, a decision the city's made many years ago. And they've done that with their reconstruction and major projects. For as long as I've been here, I don't know, Brendan, if you know how far back that, that goes, but it goes back ways. Yeah, so that, that goes back twenty-plus years. Um, cities, all cities are, are different, so that-
There you go, all right.
So, yup, in my, the communities that I work in though, that this number is actually lower. It's more beneficial to the property owners. Most-
Okay, to that point, so, chapter four twenty-nine, right?
Yup.
That's what we're talking?
Yup, that's the one.
And it's up to the city council to choose what that percentage is?
That's correct, yup.
Okay, and then how do we choose it? How have we chosen twenty-five? Brendan?
So that was a decision made many years ago and then subsequent councils have followed that through. And that's been the precedent in trying to keep it fair for when your street's done versus when somebody's else, somebody else's street was done. That, that's, that has been the number that's been used.
How long?
Twenty years for sure, two thousand two project.
Yeah, it goes back twenty years or more. It's, there's been several, several projects, yes.
And so, you said you work in other cities as well?
I work in other cities as well that assess at a higher rate than that.
Just an example, just because I don't know.
It's hard to compare apples to apples, but a couple of them, they assess fifty percent. But then they, but then they exclude, like, if the street's wider than, than thirty-four feet to thirty-six feet, they'll only assess to thirty-six feet, which in this case, your street's that width anyway. So, but, but they would assess fifty percent.
Okay.
And then a couple of communities assess for, some don't assess for storm sewer because they consider it to be, cover the whole city, whereas most, most do. Um, I do.
Curious what they use?
They use fifty percent of a standard street.
So, you're telling us we're getting a deal?
I'm not going to put that on the record, but twenty-five percent is generally favorable to the property owners.
No, that's, thank you for sharing that.
Can you talk into the microphone, I'm having a hard time hearing you, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. And, um, when it comes to, you talked about a, kind of a status meeting? When you get close to having this design?
Oh yeah, sometimes we have an open house, similar to this, with a further along design.
So-
I have that question on my list of things to follow up at the city council to see if they want to do that. Unless they have any comments on that now, if that's something- the council wants or doesn't want to do, just, it's not required, but sometimes we invite the public in, just to, here's our draft plan set, and some folks might want to say, you know, my, I have a drainage issue here, we've heard a couple of things like that, or I have a problem with my driveway, and then we can make tweaks within reason to the plan, and then also just kind of share where we're at. So, that was something if the council wants to do, we can certainly do that.
We can absolutely do that.
Oh, yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, it's not, not a requirement of the four twenty-nine, but it's a good development piece.
It would be, it would be a lot less formal than this, there wouldn't be microphones, you'd, we'd probably have a layout on the table, come up and scribble what you like or don't like, and we'll tell you if we agree or disagree, and talk about it.
And, and I guess part of the question was, would, would that be just part of like, one of your standard meetings, or would it have to be outside of that?
Typically, we do it outside, just because it's very informal, the council's welcome to attend, but you're, you're not, the intent would not be to engage the council and say you like the project or you don't like the project, that's what you can do tonight. The intent of that meeting would be to say, I have, I want you to be aware of this issue or this issue, or you just want to see where things are at in, in more, more detail than what we have here with this high level stuff.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your input.
Hi, this is Tyler Wickesberg from four two eight Walnut Road, I'm kind of at the far corner, looking at the barricades and apparently where this proposed sidewalk might dead-end the next time if it goes in or not. We'll just start off straight out, just do not, when we moved here seven years ago, or close to seven years ago, if we saw a hundred plus feet of frontage of a sidewalk on our side yard, we probably wouldn't have bought our house. I was looking at the section of sidewalk that the storage unit had to put in, which they put it right up against the curb, there's no green space, no setback at all, so when it snows, that's where all the slushy snow and stuff off the road gets dumped. That sidewalk right now is six inches of kind of crusty snow, you get a warm day or two, like I've seen people walking their dogs still on the street next to it, because it's not safe.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, the sidewalk maintenance would be the, the responsibility of the property owners, that's something that I guess was not mentioned, but something that would, was a, good point.
And I mean, we, we signed up for having, I have to shovel our mountain of our driveway at the corner of our lot, but we didn't sign up for having to do that additional stuff. And then as for like the rest of my neighbors on Glacier Road, like, when this area was developed close to twenty-five years ago, the setbacks on a lot of those homes that are facing Glacier, there's not a lot of distance there. And, you know, running through there's, you know, between mailboxes and mature landscaping and just different, some trees and other things, there's city light poles that would have to come out, plus all the communication lines, and I think the electrical conduit kind of run along that side of the street. And even if putting a sidewalk over the top of it now is okay, if there's any sort of infrastructure improvements or work that has to happen with those utilities in the future, then that sidewalk's going to be an impediment, it's an additional cost to the city and to the city's taxpayers for doing, doing some of that maintenance work long-term, where it's much easier to just go into somebody's grass or something like that that's there right now, on top of the fact you'd have all the different driveways that are going to have to get monkeyed with or cut up in order to put a sidewalk down, it's, it just really limits the room and comparing like the frontage at, like the area in Minatrisa on that side, I think those homes appear to be set back a little further than what some of the ones on Glacier are, because I don't think that development was ever intended to have a sidewalk put on it. And then, do, are, do we know, is that last block and a half or two blocks in Minatrisa, is that still not going to have a sidewalk on it leading up to the barricade, as far as we know?
Do you know the answer to that, Ryan?
No, I think we've discussed it, but that's, yeah, that's their determination, really.
Okay. Um, yeah, and then, I mean, just looking at this project with, you know, redoing the city, you know, the city streets and things like that, at this time with how everything's costing so much more, like if there's any way to limit like what the cost of this project's going to be, to still give it as much bang for our buck and get the value that we need, like I think a lot of people are here, specific to that sidewalk is just looking for ways to not have some tack-on items to try to save money as much as possible and to try to limit long-term maintenance and other issues like that for, for the neighborhood and for the city. So, thank you.
Understood.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council?
Ryan?
Jake?
Tom Schaffman, nine one one nine Glacier Road. Two questions, have you guys discussed redoing the pavement in Hidden View Park with this project?
Yes.
Yeah, so we discussed it the other day, but since it wasn't part of the feasibility study, it kind of would end up added after the fact as a city cost, that piece wouldn't be assessed, but we have discussed potentially adding that.
Okay, and as far as the assessed portion of the city, what fund does that come, come out of that you guys would pay? What, what fund would the city pull out to pay their assessment of the taxes?
I suspect that would be a combination, how much of it is attributed to storm sewer, how much is attributed to water, et cetera, perhaps the park fund, so to, to be determined, once we have more, more detail on the cost and what exactly would comprise that assessment.
Sounds good. No sidewalks, cheers.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, legal council, and everybody from the community. My name is Muriel Phillip, and I live at nine oh six nine Glacier Road. So, I came here specifically regarding the sidewalks, and I think it's important to punctuate this, as others have done, but we have no reason to have sidewalks, and we have limited frontage in the, to the main Glacier Road anyway. So, like the two gentlemen before me pointed out, there, it would make more of a mess than do good. And I do home office out of my home, so I notice the traffic, I see the kids are very well-taught to walk single file, I see the people that are out walking their dogs, it's, it's spread out throughout the day, and so, there's not a large volume of traffic, foot traffic in that area. And it's very, people are very conscientious and careful, I just love the neighborhood. We moved in late last fall, and people are so considerate, so careful, and I just haven't seen any problems. So, I have my office right facing the road, and I'm, I'm watching, and I hardly ever see anyone, and the kids, like I say, are, seem to be very safe, and so, no sidewalks. And I also would like to say, I feel there should be enough, first of all, has there been an environmental impact study done regarding the ponds and all the drainage areas involved?
So, an environmental impact study is not required, we did do the testing in the pond per the MPCA regulations, little bit different process than what you're describing, but we have followed all the, all the required steps, but the, the EIS or the EAW or the EA, none of those were required.
Okay, that's good to know.
And there, there will be permits from like the Minnehaha Creek watershed district, and we'll have to follow all the MDH permits, everything will be followed that is required.
Okay, and then the final notation I'd like to make is that, when you said you're going to gather the bids and go with the lowest, I would strongly recommend or like, or if it's a council than yourself, to have an advisory committee to review the bids, because like, you know the saying, you go cheap, you get cheap.
Yeah, I meant to comment on this before, so the, the language is responsible and responsive. Usually it turns out to be the low bidder, we, we know who the usual suspects are around here, we have a working relationship. In the event, there's a couple contractors that I, we're not excited about, we don't necessarily have to award to them, but we have to have a good reason that, that can stand up legally, so that will also be reviewed, it will be both responsive, which just means submitting your bid, right, and, but then also responsible, that's the part that's a little more vague, so there is some flexibility for the council, if we get a low bidder that we are not excited about or has a bad reputation, that, that may come into play.
Okay, thank you very much. One final notation is, if we do need to do a petition, and the one gentleman had already started to run out here, I'm more than happy, I have a lot of time to do this myself, even though I run my own business, I would be more than happy to go door to door to all the people affected to have a petition signed, so feel free to call me, my name is Muriel Phillip, and if somebody started a petition, I'll do the footwork.
Just, just for my.
I don't think we're going to need it.
Just for my.
Could we move on from the sidewalk now?
Just for my information, aside from the gentleman from Mackentunes, everyone, close your eyes so the neighbors can't see, is there anybody here that's in support of this sidewalk? Okay?
Oh, sorry.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for everything that you guys do to keep our city safe and the fire chief, so I'm really happy to be in St. Bonny, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Patrick Ague, four two zero seven Walnut. Two words on the sidewalk, I'm sorry, my wife and I do a lot of walking, we'll go over beyond the barricade into Minatrisa, and when you hit the sidewalks over there, ninety percent of the time, we're still on the street, because the sidewalks are worse than the street, especially in the winter, is what I mean. But then the barricade situation, during, I don't know who's in charge of that, or who wants it and who doesn't, but during construction, would it make sense to open that up?
I think most people would probably disagree with that assessment.
What's that? Okay, well, I'm retired, I'm out in my garage a lot, you want to lessen traffic, you might want to open it up, because so much traffic comes in here with people on their Google and run into that barricade, and then come up on Walnut and turn around, it, it's ridiculous. And I've seen, and I know Tyler's got kids, and I, my neighbor's got kids, that just recently, this fall, there was a truck semi come through there, I mean, oversized truck, super-long semi, what he's doing in there, I don't know.
Yeah, they shouldn't be in there in the first place.
But he got to the sign and he couldn't go through, I watched him for fifteen minutes trying to back into Walnut to turn around, he finally gave up, my neighbor went out to check on the kids, because they're all riding their bikes right out there, to make sure everything was going to be alright. I talked to another gal that lives down on Spruce and Glacier, and she says, I remember that, that guy had to back all the way out to ninety-two. Now, I understand that there used to be a barricade on Spruce at the line, why is that open? I, I've lived in many different communities around the cities, I've never saw a barricade between Bloomington and Richfield, Maple Grove and Plymouth, I don't get it.
I will attempt to answer that, and Brenda, you might need to correct me, I think the Spruce one had a different agreement that was tied to building number of homes that went in, there was a trigger for that, where that had to come out?
So, the construction traffic didn't come through?
The houses were already built.
So, once the houses were built, and that, it was designed, it was intended to restrict the construction traffic, and then once the homes were X percent built, that would go away? And the one on Partridge, was that set up differently?
It's the same, certain percentage of homes built in Hunter's Crest, and then it would come down.
Oh, and so, and that, that threshold has not been met?
On Glacier.
For those two streets, was that rule, and Glacier was to be permanent?
Permanent.
Glacier was, okay.
And that's in the sewer extension agreement.
Okay, so there's an agreement that's different, Glacier agreement's different than Spruce agreement. Okay.
And I, I understand that, that sign is, all those signs are breakaway for emergency vehicles. I think Eric left, but I think I asked him one time, he said, I'd never drive our fire trucks through there. You're going, you're going to lose tires going through there, and then what good are you?
Yeah.
So, it's really pretty ridiculous.
Yeah, I think those are bollards there that can come down, I haven't been back there for quite some time, but I guess I'm not positive of the answer to that.
If we wanted to, to me, if we wanted to increase or double our traffic on Glacier, then we'd open it, if you want twice as much traffic on it, and that's part of the reason that it's there, is so we don't have all the traffic. I live on the curve on Glacier, and I think we'd be having some troubles with kids that have been riding their bikes over the years with doubling the traffic there, I mean, it's just, wouldn't really increase it. I know now people in Hunter's Crest are used to going, if they're going to seven, they go the, you know, up to seven on, on, on. What's wrong? Food, yeah, or, or they go out the other way to, to hit ninety-two, to go to Colonia or wherever.
Didn't, several years ago, wasn't this brought up, and the residents said, leave those barriers in there?
Yes.
And, and we were questioning it because of police, fire, that type of thing, it would be quicker to save people's lives, but the residents that lived in that said, no, leave those up, and we followed their request.
Yeah, the police department and the fire department have both requested it be taken down.
Yep, but the residents said no, so we didn't.
I think they know which way they're going now, the chief's here, I think he can attest to that.
The other point would be, is if there ever was a time to take them down, I mean, now that you're redoing the road, might be the time.
I think we should put a sign up for that poor semi guy, no through street.
Now, somebody mentioned no outlets.
Yeah.
There is one right on Spruce and Glacier. You've got the stop sign, and then you've got the no outlet. Now, maybe, see, because you can go out on Spruce and get out, so that's really, you know, you can't put the no outlet out at ninety-two.
Yeah, technically, the no outlet sign should be back west of Spruce.
But, you know, I guess the people that just go with Google today aren't going to look for that no outlet sign anyway, because it's amazing how many people come in there and turn around.
We could easily add a no, no truck traffic sign.
You talk about reducing traffic, I think you're generating more traffic with it being closed.
Understood.
Thank you for your input. Would anybody else like to speak?
Got anything else? Any signals?
I think I'm good.
No.
Question for me?
Can I, I just have a question?
Okay, another one.
Could you?
Couple more, just walk out.
Yep.
Hi, I'm awful short, my name's Lisa Calhoun, I'm at four two two four Spruce Road, and I was just wondering, it's not on here anywhere, you haven't indicated it, but are you thinking about eventually carrying that sidewalk over onto Spruce? Because you mentioned, now that you're digging up the road, now is the prudent time to do it, while you're digging up the road on Spruce as well.
Yeah.
So, why was there no sidewalk proposed for Spruce? I don't want one.
It was a financial decision, mostly, because most of the traffic is Glacier, Glacier is the heaviest traffic, so that's where we want, want safer pedestrian access, that was why we decided to add it to this project.
I beg to differ with you, we have traffic coming all of Hunter's Crest, comes down Spruce, and then yes, goes down Glacier, but we have it as well.
Yeah.
One thing I'd like to ask, excuse me, what would be the savings, in other words, what is the cost of the sidewalk going in on Glacier, what would be the cost that we would be assessed without the sidewalk going in on Glacier? What's the difference?
So, we didn't.
We don't want that assessment, you know, we're all pinching pennies right now, because everything's so doggone expensive.
Yeah, we did not split that out in the study, but we do have those costs, I think Ryan's trying to eyeball a number here real quick, not for the assessment impact, but what that total would be.
I mean, I'm thinking, we, we were, pardon me?
About four hundred dollar bucks.
That's, that's what the.
Forty-five hundred.
Because we kind of, we kind of figured it would be about forty-five, forty-eight dollars a month, that when we would all be assessed, for you to do your five, five million dollars.
Yeah, to, to your point, to your point, your assessment would go down, I, I don't have that precise number, maybe, maybe.
Four hundred and twenty bucks per, per unit.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's the right number, but it very well could be, yeah.
Okay, so then, has Spruce Road been proposed or thought about or talked about, or in your thought bubble, what's going on there?
So, we did do a cost estimate for Spruce Road, it was, it was after the feasibility study was completed, so it's, it wasn't another one that was a potential addition, that I think council decided at the time not to.
Well, I'm just going to say, no sidewalks, Spruce Road.
Okay.
No sidewalks, period.
You're welcome. Was there anybody else who wanted to speak? I thought there was one other person that was walking, no.
Thank you all for coming.
Yep, please, one more. Yep, um, please, one more.
I'm Dwight Flomette over at 8961 Partridge. I just wanted to applaud the plan, I think it's a good one, and I've been doing this for 35 years, and I wouldn't do anything less on these roads as far as the reclamation, so just want to offer support.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Anybody else have anything else they'd like to add? So are you absolutely sure about the sidewalks, or should be-
Can I ask, Jake? In Mound now, how do, they are not doing special assessments, and how are they doing that?
I have not done any work in or around Mound, I don't know, Ryan, if you know the answer to that, but the, the general answer to that is that, uh, you have to increase your taxes, you get a higher tax levy, and impact everybody, that's the, um, that's the general answer to that question. So instead of the city financing, I don't remember what the exact math was here at the end in the cost summary, instead of the city financing $4.1 million, the city would be financing $5.3 million, so, and whatever that result in math would be divided by the, by the city, so that's higher, higher taxes.
Higher taxes, but then you don't pay the upfront money.
Yeah, so, yeah, you wouldn't have a higher-
Spread out among all of the residents instead of just-
Yeah, so, so the pro, the pro for you folks is, yeah, your assessments would go away, the con would be, every project in future years, you'd also be paying for a chunk of that, so, it's kind of a trade-off there.
I just want to say thank everybody for coming, it's great to have this much interest in what's going on in your city, we don't usually see this, and it's fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, thank you all for coming, and thanks for sharing your opinions, it really does help us all.
Leading a dude.